I will accept nominations for Chair.
I would like to nominate Sheila Dibb for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay, any additional nominations for Chair? Not hearing any. I need a vote on appointing designated Sheila Dibb as Chair for the coming year. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Sheila, you can take it over from here.
Thank you, can I take nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Wayne Walker.
I'd like to nominate Wayne Walker for Chair, for setting up the Chair.
I'm taking the guy on the phone.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I'll take nominations for Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Stillings for Clerk on the Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Skip, are you, did you, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Yep.
All opposed?
None.
None, okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 24 in Payroll?
So moved?
So.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have four sets of minutes here, none of which, I think we'll skip them all tonight since Skip's not here in person. Well, we can if Skip's here in person, a couple of them. Couple are gonna have to be a special approval. And I think we can go right into our 6:05 appointment with Mr. Moriarty, come on up. We're down.
I'm gonna pass these down for signature, these are the warrants for this week.
Just give you a quick department update and then get on to the real stuff that we need to talk about. Over the past month and a half, we've had some incidents that occurred that we don't see very often. One being a plane crash that occurred in the town of New Braintree that the town of Barry was involved with. We did receive all the 911 calls for that due to the proximity of the call that was placed. Another incident that occurred was a motor vehicle pursuit that actually stretched out through three of our communities. Rutland, Hubbardston, and Barry ended in a foot pursuit as well. My staff handled those exceptionally. Recently promoted Michelle Jones to Dispatch Supervisor approximately two months ago now. And we're currently in the hiring process for two part-timers. We're in the second phase of that process. And then, talk about Warren now. So over the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with the town officials from Warren, Police Chief, Fire Chief, and the Chairman of their Board. Recently, we received a letter from the Chairman of the Board looking to move forward with regionalizing with the Rutland Rec. Right now, I am working on drafting up an IMA, a single IMA for all five towns to place their signatures on, accepting Warren into this, into the rec. That is what the state's looking for right now, is that IMA to change our status and our development grant that we just submitted. Right now, it's, the status is, Warren is just looking into joining. Getting that IMA signed by all five communities and producing that to the state will change our status to Warren's ready to join. Which gives us a better probability of getting everything that we asked for in the grant, which was, I think, roughly $824,000 that we applied for this year. That's to bring Warren over and some other infrastructure pieces that we need to actually bring them on, being our radio consoles. Right now, those are currently maxed out. We applied for all brand-new consoles, that's about $250,000 for that. But what the state really wants to see is the district model. The Board previously signed a letter of support on moving forward with the district here in Rutland as well as the town of Hubbardston. Still working on Barry and Okem to move forward with joining a district model. That's what communities are looking for, that's what Warren is looking for, they want to see us moving towards a district. Gives everybody a seat at the table when it comes to their decisions with the rec administrative, operationally, and financially. So I'm still working on that. I got a meeting with Barry to try to resolve them on June 4th with the State 911 Department as well to hopefully answer all their questions and move forward. And Okem will be shortly after. That's with Warren. Other piece of information I need to bring up now is, we're growing and we're starting to ma- max out our space that we have right now currently in the Public Safety Building. Looking for space throughout Rutland, buildings. The State 911 Department will not build a brand-new building, they will pay to renovate in an existing building. So currently, right now, just ideas on the table right now, two of them is the Town Annex, that's one idea, to separate us, get our own building. There's plenty of room there. And then there's also another option on the table which the town of Barry has offered, which is completely the third floor of the Henry Woods Building, which has plenty of room up there as well. Don't know if the Board would like to see Dispatch moving to another community, but those are the two options on the Board. The spot in Barry right now is completely vacant. It's just, we need to start having discussions on building space, where we can grow. With Warren, it's gonna totally max out our center. We won't have any additional space to bring anybody else in to help reduce the cost with the assessments, so you start looking at space to grow or other buildings. If anybody has any ideas, I'm open to them, but that's the only one I have right now. It's connected through fiber, that's where the main infrastructure goes through, is the Town Annex right now, and then it comes to us. So it'd be the most cost-effective as well to move from the Public Safety Building to the Annex. Yes, sir?
I have a couple of questions. Could you bring me up to speed a little bit on Warren, because this is really the first time I'm hearing about it?
Yep.
Did we, as in the town, go to Warren and try to-
Recruit them.
Recruit them in, or are they coming to us saying, hey, we're without a dispatch center, can you help? Because they're not really local.
They, yeah, they have a dispatch center, they, they're having issues. They've recently looked at regionalizing with a couple of other communities, fell through them. They, after that happened, they came to us. They had previous talks with Nathan Kenny, which was the first director here years ago, and they remember that conversation. And then they re-approached me approximately two and a half weeks ago and just started the basic talks of where we can move forward. And, and here we are, they're, they're very, they're, they want to move here, they want, we want to do it right, we don't want to rush it. Logistically, it'll all work, radio, telephone, internet connection, everything, it'll all work. All my engineers have agreed on that as well, there's a plan in place to move forward.
And if I could add, please, through the Chair, State 911 has also committed to working with Warren to get them up and running, to connect them to this Regional Dispatch Center. So State 911 is vested in this, it appears to.
And then my future plans is to grow that side of the district, possibly Palmer and Ware after, after that. Those are the other two communities that expressed interest in regionalizing with Warren originally, but then it fell through. I don't know the reasons why, but that would be my next course of action after Warren is brought in, if we could.
So we're actively looking to expand our Regional Dispatch domain?
Yes.
There would be significant, with this, I know Mike mentioned it, but there, the member towns that are already part of the Regional Dispatch Center would also be starting to see significant reductions in assessments. When there's, when there are increases in population being served by the Dispatch Center, there's gonna have to be staff added. But this example, what are the, what are the potential savings with just Warren being added?
I'm sorry, you're on the space itself.
This is with adding Warren to our portfolio?
This is current budget, so on the left side is the current budget, on the right side, right side is adding Warren. That's with not adding any extra support money coming from the state, that's with last year's grant award. That goes for this year's budget right now, too, that's the 274, 892. That, that will change this year as well, we just don't have those figures in place yet. The grant hasn't been awarded. So that number will change on both sides, Warren and Rutland, more on the Warren side due to additional community coming in. Also bringing them in, that brought that $25,000 to $50,000 with the Wireless Direct, puts us in another tier, gives us more support money on that end.
Adding Warren and these other towns, is that gonna like mandate us to move from the existing space to something bigger like the Henry Woods Building?
It's not mandated us, but-
Is that part of the board?
It's not mandated us, we can take Warren where we're, where we're at right now, but looking at Palmer and Ware, we will not be able to bring them in without looking at new space.
And the grant will pay for that?
Yes.
All of it, all the renovations.
Mike, am I-
And everything that's going with Warren right now, there's no cost to us for that. That's all gonna come from the development grant, changing their radio system, all new portables out there, MDTs, all the infrastructure is all, would be paid by the state.
Am I looking at this right, Warren's percentages on population put them just over Barry?
Yes.
How volume?
And that 5,100 is not, I believe it's 5,500, that's the number that I got from the chief, but I'm pretty sure it's higher than that, so it's even gonna bring it up higher.
Okay, that might be like a 2010 census number or something?
Yes, yeah.
Do you happen to know, and I don't expect it necessarily tonight, the square footage differences, what you're in now versus this, versus the Annex versus Woods?
I did not put that together, but it's tremendously.
And then the letter we got from Warren?
Yep.
Are we the first Board to hear about this? Have you presented already to the others?
Is the first Board, yes. Some of the town administrators, all, all the police chiefs have been updated about this, fire chiefs as well. I'm meeting next week with Barry and then the following week with Okem and still have to plan one with Hubbardston.
And a question about Hubbardston, because when you talked about the district model, you didn't include them.
What's that?
You didn't include them when you started talking about your district model.
Well, they're on board.
Yeah, they're on board.
That's what I thought, I was just checking.
It was Hubbardston and, yeah, Hubbardston and Rutland were the ones that signed the letter of support with moving forward with the district. It was Barry and Okem that did not.
Do you anticipate there being a challenge to get the other communities on board with the district model, or is it just a conversation that needs to be happened?
I think it's just more conversation, more questions that need to be answered, especially on the Barry side. At Okem, I don't think they had, well, their reasoning was they didn't have the manpower to put on the Boards, something that we had to work out. They're more than welcome to appoint other members, as the draft said, so it's little logistics that had to be worked out. And that can come further down the line. Right now, I'm just looking to get an IMA signed by all five communities to move forward.
Which can be the existing IMA, they just, State 911 wants all, State 911 wants all signatures, I don't know why that's happening. Feedback, they want all signatures on one document, right now it's kind of scattered throughout, so.
Yeah, there's four, well, three different IMAs right now with signatures all over, so.
Through the Chair, how far along are we in the process? Is this like just beginning, are we all stepping in?
Just beginning.
Has there been any other discussion prior to tonight?
Many discussions, in some cases with other communities. I would say Princeton, back in the day, was, was a discussion and Princeton ended up going with Holden.
And Spencer was the most recent, which was last, last year's.
So maybe we could be brought up to speed later?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Because I'm, if you, if you look at the letter here from the Board of Selectmen and Warren's, it sounds exigent that, hey, we need to, we want to be accepted, this is an urgent request. So if we were to say, accept Warren, yeah, you can come in, we're gonna put you online and, you know, start dispatching. What additional resources are you going to need to take on another town?
Just one more full-timer at this point with their call, call volume, yep, and that was all built into those figures as well.
So the figure says 133,000, that's, is that the benefit to Rutland or the benefit to the-
Where, where are you at with 133?
That's Warren's.
Oh, that's Warren's, that's Warren's assessment, that's what Warren would pay towards the operating budget.
And who gets the money? The rec?
The town of Rutland does.
So that's the benefit minus the cost of a full-time dispatcher?
It includes the cost of the full-time.
If you look at the assessments to the left at this point versus that assessment, every town's assessments will go down slightly because of the sharing of services, even with the addition of a full-timer.
Rutland's case, it's about $42,000.
Yes.
Yes, it is, all right. I want to hear more.
Yes.
I'll have more for you, as we move forward.
Can you, you know, to Jeff's point?
Yes.
If everything were to go perfectly?
Yep.
What would be our active date?
So the agreed date between everybody right now, we're looking at January 1. That's what we're looking at right now, it could be pushed further, it could be cut back, all depends on how the process goes. If we're moving quick and their dispatches start looking for new jobs, quitting, stop showing up, that's where, that's where we have to step in and assist. So it may get cut, sure.
State 911 is also willing to cover all of that cost, too.
Yes. So if that does cut back quicker, they'll pay all the overtime costs that occurs on my budget, they're gonna pay for that.
Okay.
Which was already agreed.
They want to see this happen.
It's generous.
Yeah.
Last question, last question. Have we heard from the Chiefs on, on this prior to tonight? Not to put you on the spot, but I mean, previously, have we heard the opinion of the two Departments?
This is the first official, this is the first-
We haven't spoken with the Board about it, but we've done communications with Mike and with the town administrator. And, you know, I've been through the addition of both Hubbardston and Barry, and there was a big concern both times that we were gonna see a reduction in our services, and we haven't. Mike, with the increased funding, increased staffing, each time the service from the Dispatch Center has gotten better. And, you know, Mike has assured me that with the addition of Warren, there will be no reduction in services and it's gonna be a great financial benefit to the town.
So you're in favor?
I am.
So that's, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, I'll move for you next time.
Through the Chair, if I could just, if I could just restate the need to continue to look at space options, because this might not end with Warren. You've, now you've got Palmer and Ware out there who are going to be told they need to change, plus other towns, too. So the space, the space issue needs to be continued, to be discussed.
Mike, were you looking for action tonight, or do you still have to get your documentation ready?
Nope, no, I'm gonna, I'm drafting up an IMA and then I'll come back to the Board with more information at that time.
And what happens if this whole operation moves to Barry, to the Henry Woods, the Rutland lose control?
We go through the same angst that the other communities did when their, when their centers closed down, yeah.
But it's Barry's problem, then, or?
The host community has certain issues and certain benefits, would you say?
All depends on who remains fiscal agent and, you know, the IMAs written and-
I would guess that Barry wouldn't want to take over the fiscal agent responsibilities, that it would be just a location.
Yeah.
But again, it's a shared location, it's not Dispatch's own building, own space. And not only that, with your infrastructure that you have surrounding you now in the center of town, that's all gonna have to be reconfigured as well if you move out of town, so there's a lot-
There's a lot, it's more of a cost to move to Barry as well for the State 911 Department. It's a longer distance, because they run their own fiber line into the building, so we have a dedicated fiber line for the State 911 Department, so.
Hmm.
Just, just, uh, think about, just discussions.
Question, can you name and, name-
And he knows what I'm gonna say.
Name and address, please.
Dick Williams, planning board.
Yes, sir.
No way do I want you to move into the Annex.
Hey, I understand.
We're, we're hopefully getting a-
Understand.
Full-time planner.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to be settled, we don't need to be hosed around. So why not put another floor on your complex over there?
Where, where, where? Above, above the Dispatch Center, it's not enough room, not enough room, the Dispatch floor itself.
You can't, can't even put more steelwork in there and-
Above that is gonna be the same square footage.
A whole new roof or a whole new thing for kind of what I'm talking about.
It's gonna get-
Reuse the room, then?
Very, very costly.
Let's have a look.
And that's just a discussion, it was only one building that was brought up and offered it out there. If anybody has any other ideas, please bring them to me.
I had an idea, but it's a pit in the ground next to us.
I know, I know.
But it has to be an existing space, it has to be a renovation and a-
Which is frustrating, because-
Very frustrating.
We get the land, we don't have the-
We have plenty of land and we have wonderful locations, and I feel like this needs to be revisited and you know where I'm headed.
We put the primary building back up.
Please.
It'd be perfect.
Please.
State 911 has made it clear, they will not pay for new construction, so.
Frustrating.
Hmm, it is. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, tell your folks to keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Barron, come on up for our Minute Growth Study, Phase Two.
Good evening, thank you very much for having me here. My name's Ron Barron, I'm with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, for those of you who haven't been to one of the events that I've been at yet. I've been working very closely with the town for over a year now on this project. We have, we're about to start moving into the second phase of the growth management study that we did, that we completed last year. And Margaret asked me to come in and give you guys sort of an update about our timeline, what it is that we're trying to do, and so just in case anybody isn't 100% familiar with where we're going and what we need to do. So I have a few slides, I'm gonna kind of go quickly through them. I added more information than I probably needed to, so, because I wasn't sure exactly how much time I was gonna have. Here we go. So again, just for the general background, everybody knows how quickly the town has been growing, been adding houses and residents at extremely fast clip, much faster than a lot of the neighboring towns, most of the towns your size. And last year around this time, actually a little earlier than this, the town came to CMRPC and it asked us to conduct a growth management study on some parcels, because whether the town had realized that there were some parcels that had been approved over the years, especially during the period where you were getting a lot of new development during the last big housing boom, that had been approved but hadn't been built. And so the question that we wanted, they wanted to know is, if we had, how many were there? If we built all of them out at once, what would it end up looking like? And that was what the first phase of this study was. We found out that there were about plus or minus 400 lots that had been approved that hadn't been built at the time that we had done the study. I think maybe that number may have shrunk a little bit, because there's been some building since we finished these numbers. Just a few little facts, the, we found that the population of the town has been increasing on average about 27% per decade since the 1990s. And since 2000, we've seen about 17% growth, that's based on the most current estimate that the town did with the town census. And the housing unit growth, I thought this was really interesting, I actually did an average of all the housing units from the last, since 1990, to see how many new units you've been, you've been adding. And you've been averaging 8% growth in housing units despite two fairly sizable reductions in the housing market. That should have really slowed down housing unit growth, but you still were adding them at a clip of 8%. And so you've had a lot of, a couple of sections, you had just a lot of units being added. And we did just a little index, I'm gonna talk about this very briefly, but what we kind of did is we tried to do a quick little analysis that showed, looking at all of the investment in both development and people buying houses, sort of where the town compares compared to all the towns in our region. And the way this is clustered is this, you, we basically took the total of everything that, of all the investment that had been going on in our region in housing, and gave a percentage to each town of that market share, basically. And tried to see where you fell, and you can see that the, all of the ones at the far end are towns that are much more like the inner-ring suburbs, your Shrewsbury's, your Grafton's, your Auburn's. And the ones in the far end are the more rural communities, and Rutland is definitely skewed more towards inner-ring suburban communities and much, behaving much less like more rural, smaller communities that you have in the, in the region. And I sort of compared this to just two little clusters trying to control for some variables, and you can see that when you look at just, the one on the left is just rural communities and how you compare to that. And basically among all the, among the rural communities we looked at, Rutland is getting basically all the growth, and even when you compare it to towns like Shrewsbury and Grafton, you're still like right in the middle. So definitely showing us that the town has been behaving over the years like a, like a first-order suburb rather than a farther-out rural residential community. And so this is just a quick summary of the facts that we found. Like we said, plus or minus 400 lots, if all of those were developed at once, you're looking at between 1,000 and 1,300 new residents, as many as 500 new students, 60,000 gallons per day of additional water usage, 66,000 gallons per day of additional wastewater. And as I understand, that there is a great deal of concern that you guys are right about now at or about to exceed your contracted capacity, you know, that's something that we're definitely gonna be looking at in this, this second phase. And just as a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation while I was writing this up, I just wanted to see if you added at about 50 new units per year, how long would it take you to build all those out? It's, you could do it in about less than a decade. And 50 units is low for what the town has been adding. Last few years, I think you, you were at like 55, 60, or not 60, but I think it was like between 50 and 55 units per year.
Ware in May, and the building inspector has already hit 35.
For this year?
Yes, yes, for this year, this calendar year.
Well, and that's one of the things, it's, it's in, the, the last time that the market was this excited, was, was this hot of a seller's market, you were adding upwards. There was one year where you were adding almost 100 new units, now you had an apartment complex that went in at that time, but, you know, with the single-family housing, you were still adding well over 60 units a year, so this 50 is pretty conservative.
Ron, did, did you say you did do a water study on this?
We didn't do a full water study, what we did is we did an estimate based on studies that had been done previously, or, which told us that if you added a certain number of new population, how much water would they be drawing down based on past performance? So it wasn't, we didn't look at any of the impacts, we didn't look at any, like, what your capacity was. I did notice from the, the, some of the annual reports that we looked at, that there was a lot of concern in those reports about the fact that you're pretty much close to maxed out, if not already exceeding max, your maximum draw on your main water supply. But we didn't look at how that would impact that.
We're pretty much maxed out now, or will be?
I, well, I don't want to speak to that, because I, that was just something that I read in the report, that there was some concern that you were either getting close to or-
We're discussing that at this meeting, Gary will be addressing that.
But it's not something that we actually looked at a hard answer to, so I wouldn't really, really, wouldn't really be able to speak to it comfortably.
Would your facts are sound with the 60,000 per day, that's 24 million gallons of water additional that we have to come up per year?
Assuming that everybody, it moves in at the exact, everybody, all the units get developed and you actually have the same per-household growth rate that you would, yes.
In your build-out analysis, you're gonna be delving into the infrastructure, the build-out costs for the infrastructure, too, right? And the, and the fiscal impacts in water sewer?
Yes, exactly, and I'm, yeah, we're about to talk about now what we're gonna be doing for Phase Two. So we looked at this sort of cursory, we only had a year to work on it, wasn't a whole lot of time, and so we managed to get, I think, quite a, quite a lot of good data. But we want to be able to do in the second phase, do something a little bit more in-depth. So what we're going to do this time is we're going to do a full build-out analysis for the town. And what that's gonna look at is, we're gonna look at all the available land that's still there, take out everything that's, that's protected, everything that's fully constrained, and only look at land that can be developed for residential housing. And then we're gonna see how many lots you can potentially pull out of that based on current zoning, and based on other constraints. We want to look at, then we're gonna take all of those lots, see how many, what the kind of impacts would be on that in terms of population growth, in terms of sewer capacity, in terms of roads built, basically in terms of whatever constraints, or whatever variables the town is most concerned about at this time. So what we would like to do is, once we've done that, we're going to take the recommendations that we come from this. So if we see that there are some certain, there are any zoning amendments or policy changes or any kind of actions that the town can take, this grant has money in it specifically earmarked for implementation. So the third phase of this that's gonna be happening next year is, after we've done all the analysis, after we've made our initial recommendations, we're gonna be able to take that to the town, we're gonna be able to have public hearings, and we're going to be able to implement that with the town. Hopefully, if there's anything that, that- Hopefully, if there's anything that, that includes any, if there's any bylaws that need to be amended, we're actually, we have the money to go to, to help you go to town meeting and try to get those things passed. If that's something that has to come out of it. This is just a quick overview of the project tasks. Basically, I touched on all of them, including the implementation, so I don't think we really need to go over that again. As far as the timeline, the build-out is going to start this, is gonna start off in a couple of weeks. We're gonna be doing that internally. We already have all the data that we need for it. We're gonna need a couple of weeks to develop the model, come up with that, and then there'll be some input with the town that'll be required as far as we have sort of, there's two pieces that end up going in it where we pull land out of it. The first one is the absolute, we call them the absolute constraints, and this is any land that's under conservation, or it's wetlands, or it's within a specific buffer, or it's in a zone, it's already built, that kinda stuff. But then there's the other constraints which are a little bit more nuanced. There's like aquifer protection zones, slopes, things like that that can impact, that can make a plot of land less developable. Point being, that's the kinda thing we're gonna come back to the town after we've done the initial analysis and start to ask how much impact do you think these are? And we're gonna be working with you guys on developing that. After that, that preliminary data will be utilized to start building the framework for the fiscal impact analysis, and that's where we're gonna need more involvement from the town. And one of the things that we're talking about, we're thinking about looking at for next steps is the possibility of the town forming a steering committee that can help work on this project with us, because it would be extremely helpful to have members of various boards, the planning board, the conservation commission, board of selectmen, basically any commission or board that has a stake in this. It would be good to have a representative on, so that way we can have from the very beginning the input we need to make sure that we're, this product is as effective and useful as it can be. And then finally, once we've done this, then we'll do the recommendations over the winter, and then next year through the early winter and spring, we'll be coming up with a package of things that the town can implement that, with the goal that if we have to take anything to town meeting, we'll be able to do that for the annual town meeting next year. So again, for the next steps, we will be beginning doing the framework for the build-out and analysis. And there's no action, I believe, that the, that the board would need to take tonight. But we could, because we're probably not going to be really needing to call upon a steering committee until we've developed the model and we've started doing the preliminary analysis. But then we'll start to need to get the feedback from the different boards and committees so that we can have that going. So we're probably thinking maybe early summer, mid-July, something like that. We'd wanna start having a committee if that's a possibility. Again, it's not a requirement of the grant, but it is something that would make it a much more streamlined process.
Are you willing to work with us on the, on the specific charge for the steering committee?
Certainly, yes. And those are just, the bullet points up there were just a couple of recommendations. Typically with me, with committees like this, we'll meet monthly. They tend to be subject to open meeting laws. So that has to be taken into, into consideration. And hopefully, we will be able to have something pulled together in a reasonable timeframe that the town will be able to, to implement by this time next year. So is any questions?
When you do the build-out study, Ron, are you, how are you going to work in the options between existing sewer, available sewer, possible limited sewer district? What will that look like if you're starting right away?
Well, what we'll do is we'll pull up with, we'll run the numbers based on what exists right now. So if there's no real limitations, like right now, if we're looking, when we look at the sewer and the water, we'll look at what's there. So if there's anything that's not already connected to the sewer, we'll assume that it's not going to be. But obviously, that's not necessarily the case. And that's where we'll start to, once we get the, those preliminary numbers, we'll look at the zoning requirements as they are on the ground. And we'll bring that information to the town. And if we get feedback that says, well, you know, we think that it's not that realistic that people won't run sewer out to this road because we've seen it happen before, then we can modify the, the model and rerun the numbers and see what it looks like that, that way. But we're gonna be looking at what's there now and then start from there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody?
Thank you so much.
Exciting.
So exciting.
Is St. Patrick's represented? You guys can stay there if you want, since there's a, you know, just introduce yourselves.
Yes, Joey, no, you have a good voice.
And I'll keep it to a low.
Pleasure representing St. Patrick's Parish. First of all, Father Jim wanted to extend his apologies. He wanted to be here as well, but he had a conflict with him tonight. Robin and I sit on a committee that is planning our second annual, St. Patrick's Second Annual Beer, Brats and Blessings fundraiser event. And we're here tonight asking for a one-day pouring permit. One day, but actually the event is being held on June 2nd from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM in the hall of the parish center over at St. Patrick's Church. It was a very successful event last year. Again, this is Second Annual, so we're hoping for a repeated success story.
Question for the chair. Are we required to charge for these permits? Is there any, where's the church?
The board can actually choose to waive the fee.
Just keep in mind the precedent for our profits, but absolutely, we can waive. We typically waive permits that were within the town, as in basically use taxpayer payer money to go from one department to another, and we will waive those fees.
Where's the church? I need all hope I can get.
What's that?
The church.
You may wanna amend this. It says 6 to 9. Are you gonna do it from 6 to 10?
Oh, it doesn't say, yes. It should be 6 to 10.
Seeking a motion?
Is there any, any questions? Anyone? No?
No.
Yes, I will entertain a motion.
Can I make a motion that we waive the fee for the church? And also that we approve the one-day pouring license for St. Patrick's, June 2nd, 2018, 6 until close.
Wait a second on the motion as presented. Is there any discussion? Comments? No?
No, I, thank you for the motion. Appreciate that.
All in favor?
Thank you, Marla.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous? Abby, can you do me a favor? Nobody signs this the way this board has written. It says the underside, but nobody actually signed it.
Didn't change it to 10? With the tree up?
Yes.
Skip's still on?
I'm not sure. Skip, are you still with us?
Skip?
Hello? The noise stopped.
Skip? Okay. It's all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we come by the office and pick it up or? Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Moving on, is there anyone here for public comments? We have somebody nodding.
Yeah, really, Dick Williams, so what? Something I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question after Gary gets done talking. But what I really would like to do, Mastoc, last year, or was it two years ago now, was gonna do something about crosswalks. You know, have you heard from them at all?
We were just talking about this the other day. Gary was following up with Mastoc, the person, the engineer that actually came out here. Have you heard anything back from him?
I have not.
No, not yet?
I just saw the end of District 3 regarding those, Dick, on Main Street in the center of town as well as further south of Whistler.
Gary, who painted the crosswalk on Palmagussett across? Thank you. Is there any reason for us to not do the rest?
We generally do the painting in the beginning of the new budget season when we have the money to buy paint. As you know, all the striping is done prior to school opens, so crosswalks are the first priority, so it's something to do.
Okay.
All right, I have another one. Remember I talked about road certification, you know? And I happened to have a gentleman came into the planning board and looking, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do with this lot. It's one of these little small ones on Turkey Hill Road, and here we go again. And there was something else brought up, you know, about a private way. We, we need to get this thing done very quickly, you know? I don't know if there's any more funding through Central Mass Regional Planning or whatever, but we need to get this, these roads that we have in our town certified so that anybody else that comes in, you know, I wanna put two houses here, three houses, and here's a cart path, we're not gonna get hung again by allowing it.
I agree with Dick, but I think a good first step is back in the 1960s when the town actually accepted that statute about maintenance of public ways, it's snow removal from roads and sidewalks. I think the town really needs to clearly, and this is in the board's jurisdiction, the town really needs to identify those private ways that the town maintains under that chapter and section and limit it at that. And that way, at least the list can't expand, and then we can work on the road certification from that. But it would at least, it would at least curb the, the growing list of private ways.
Thank you.
Are you volunteering to put together that list?
Thank you very much.
I think, I think the, the list of the town maintained private ways would be easy enough to bring to the board. I think in the next couple of meetings, that's something that, that town has record of, so we could at least start there.
I'm overloaded. I can't. Like I say, I have one that I'm gonna wait for Gary to ask about.
Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none? I'm moving on. I don't know if you heard me. Gary, you're up. Hold on, he, hold on. Public comment? Public comment? Mr. Cronacioli? No? You're good, okay.
I'm here to support the two new select people.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your presence.
Screw this up on you, Margaret, cuz I'm just
Gary, just hit the, hit the mouse pad. Just touch the mouse pad. I don't want it to go back to the main screen, but, okay, that's it. It'll, it'll, it'll refresh it. That's fine. It's fine.
All right, I'll just give you a couple of updates. First one I had on the list was Chapter 90. We have not received the official 377,000 yet, but we had a balance in the kitty of 236 left over from last year. Once we get to 377, it'll put us up over half a mil. So what I have done with the 236 that's in there is submitted two projects, one being Irish Lane, which was in dire need of work. Fortunately for Chapter 90 and fortunately for us and for those residents of Irish Lane, what we did was reclaim, calcify, grade, compact, and re-calcify. So that road is a dirt road, and it will remain that, you know, with calcification treatments hopefully every year if it needs it. So I wrote it first thing this morning. After we did get the rains, I'm very happy with the outcome. I haven't heard anything, but, and that only cost Chapter 90 roughly $25,000. The other one is what we've talked about in the past, especially last year, was for East Hill. So we're buying $30,000 worth of structures. We bought the pipe last year out of the initial project request and equipment rental to dig the, dig the ditches for drainage and the catch basins and roughly 1,100 feet of paving. That'll cost us around $1.50 to $1.75 to do that. And that's where we are until we get the allotment, the additional allotment for, from Chapter 90. Any questions?
1,100 feet of pavement?
Yeah, Chapter 90 will only come on if you do 500 feet. So we're doing 1,100 feet. We have to do it in segments. We just don't have the money to do the whole 1.1. So it's actually the worst part of that way, the hill. You and I, you and I drove that. So the hill that's closest to the Pleasantdale side with drainage.
It's just gonna go out to the bottom and that's it?
Excuse me?
How far is it gonna go? Just to the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, to the bottom, you know. And then depending, I mean, we can always add to that project, but we have to wait till we see what's left from the engineering of the Multimil Dam and also the tip. That's the big thing. Those are the big things on the plate for Chapter 90.
Also the what?
Tip and the Multimil Dam.
What's the tip?
Transportation improvement project is Palmagussett work that's going from Main Street approximately 1.1 miles to, to the Brunells and Richards. New paving, streetlights and sidewalks. Okay?
Scheduled for 2022.
Or sooner if we can do it, but we'll see.
Gary, the intersection of Irish and is it Cameron? How did that?
No, that's, that's maybe not even, that's probably a quarter way up from the Turkey Hill roadside.
Okay.
But that does go by there, does go by Cameron. That's taken care of.
Okay.
And that goes all the way down to the intersection of Jamie Anne and Prospect.
Okay.
The rest of Irish from that point to 122 or Berry Paxton Road is, is already paved.
Right. Okay.
And then we have the infamous stormwater. It appears that the appeals have not, not gone through, although they say they're still fighting them. So effective July 1st of 18, we will be following the new stormwater rules and regs. From that point, we have 90 days to apply for our NOI at a cost of roughly $8,000. Now, so everybody knows the, the schedule I brought to you, to you folks several meetings ago of the 1.1 million that it's gonna cost us over a five-year period, that's where this stuff comes into play. And that was, at the next meeting, I think Fred Sivian's coming to, to give you a little more education on where we are, where the state is. His suggestions and recommendations of how we raise this money. Mine was a, through, I think I've mentioned, a stormwater enterprise. So there's a lot of work to be done, and as it progresses, I will certainly keep you up to date. But that is something, if the appeals win again, I mean, initially, the initial stormwater permit went from 2003 to 2008. It was a five-year. That was supposed to be re, implemented obviously after the five years. So we haven't had one since '08, so it's been 10 years mirroring the initial. And now all these expenses and costs are gonna come on us. And so it's gonna be a tough battle, but we're gonna have to dig in and take care of it. Okay, before I get into the water sewer, just a Rutland, I gotta Rutland Heights review. They had the, and I believe it was a successful with the Spartan race up there. The DPW chipped in with all other departments, police fire, and got the place ready and dressed up. All the culverts have been cleared. The grass has been mowed. I don't know, and we do that generally twice a year. So the place looks pretty good. So it's just an update of where we are with the, with the heights. Okay?
Did they leave the dirt up there that they hauled in?
The dirt did remain up there that they hauled in, so it's, that stayed there. I did not know that dirt was coming, so I mean, people called me the next day and say, where did dirt come from? I had no idea whatsoever.
What? Why did they haul dirt?
They hauled dirt in their gravel for the upside to get access, better access, so it wouldn't be so muddy for parked cars. So, but
At the heights.
At the heights.
That's okay with you?
Sure. I'll take what I can get for free anytime.
It depends on what's in it.
I was gonna say.
Now, we've got I brought you some information, or I sent you all some information regarding water and sewer. And the gentleman from CMRPC brought it up and gave some, some figures. So just off the get-go, 400 new homes go into town of Rutland. That's 176,000 gallons of water and sewer a day. That's not gonna cut it. Right now, we are permitted for 370,000 gallons per day. We are at 350. That leaves us 20,000 gallons a day for use. So so everyone understands the max yield out of Mushkapag is 550. The process, and we are not even ready or permitted to apply for additional water out of Mushkapag yet. And the reason is that we have to be below 10% UAW for three consecutive years. And then their process begins, theirs being the DEP to permit us for additional. But still, the max is 550. So we've gone, on the UAW, we've gone from 32% down to 15 to 17 now. So we've, we've reduced that tremendously. But we still have to get it below 10. We gotta get to low, to like 9%. We gotta get to low, to like 9% on account of four, before the DEP considers us for the next step of the permitting process to increase the yield that we can take out of Mushka Park. So like, like I say, when Ron said 400 houses, that's, that's not gonna do it. So we have to be below 10%. And as far as sewer goes, right now, we're at dot 540 gallons per day, 540,000 gallons a day. We're permitted for 537 for the rest of this calendar year. So we're already over. And a lot of that, hopefully, is due to INI. Now that we've just passed the article, so we can spend $325,000 on the INI. The bids come in very good, by the way, under 200. So we are working on that. As you all know, Margaret especially, we had to ask for additional funds to pay for the sewer for the last quarter of 17.
Yeah.
And that was because of an extremely wet spring, so that tells everybody, all the communities involved with Upper Blackstone, that there is an INI issue, which has to be taken care of. So as Weston and Sampson get started with this next process, of course, I can't say they're gonna reduce it by a lot, I hope they do, but after the cameras and engineering and design, and then construction, hopefully, we'll be able to curtail some of these problems that we have with groundwater and so on and so forth.
You're still gonna be up against, you're still gonna be up against the limit.
Oh, yeah.
Your open limit now, you better turn it down a little.
Bringing to, bringing to the forefront that I would, I am here to present to the board, recommend to the commissioners that we have an immediate, as there is a process to get there, water sewer moratorium. As we set right now, we just cannot handle this. This, we don't have the capacities anymore until all of these problems are taken care of. Now, we have roughly 50 miles of line, water and sewer. We have 1,700 users, and as you can see from the map, that's our, that's our, that's our district. And I don't have a Hoosie or whatever, a laser.
You can, I'll zoom in over--
She's gonna zoom it.
I'll zoom it.
So I don't think anybody, I don't wanna get in, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in anybody's way, but--
There, so.
These are all the subareas. You've got one up through four. Those are all the ones that we have. Those I want to be defined suburb, the district, the water sewer district, not to go beyond. This is right here, that's Bryce Lemon. This one down here was the other proposal, which I sent to Dick, I haven't seen yet, Nobelville. Sooner or later, all of Bryce Lemon's gonna become part of the district, but I don't want it to be. I wanna stay right where we are, and then we won't have any danger of exceeding going over what we're allowed.
We already exceeded.
Hmm? Yes, that's correct. I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that the sewer, part of it, will go down tremendously once we have this study done. We skipped five years of, of the sewer inspection and engineering and design because we just didn't have the money to do it. We paid that, we, we saved the, the money, we got some, some funds into sewer free cash, which got us up to about 500,000 or so, and we had to pay 300 and change, or got 300 and change approved for this study. And this is supposed to be done every five years, so, that stuff. And we're also looking at replacing some defunct antique waterline. And everybody knows how much it'll cost just for Calerios, for instance, to that whole neighborhood, it's 1.7. We have $900,000 of free cash, and alls I want, alls I want out of that is $35,000 for an engineering for the whole neighborhood, and then we have to do the, replace the waterline, which is AC, in bits and pieces. So my recommendation, DPW's recommendation to the board, sewer commissioners is a immediate through the process, through the public hearing process, that we have to do sewer and water moratorium.
Good.
Gary, before the questions, can you give a little bit more information, obviously half-new, half-old? So when it comes to inflow and infiltration, back in 2008, we started a five-year program, and it was phased where we found, do you remember the number, how much overall INI?
At that time, total, we were at 700,000 gallons a day, and we reduced that down to mid-force. So we are at--
We're back up to--
We are, I don't know if, did I tell you what the sewer was? These go in, these go in annual increments, which we really had, had to fight for every year because it used to be five years. So we're now at dot 540, we're permitted for dot 537, and the amount will go up to 543 on January 1st, 2019. Many more houses on sewer if we don't find a tremendous amount of INI. We're over.
And this contract ends in 2020?
2020.
With a cap, and we have not begun any type of negotiations to extend it.
Could you educate me a little bit on what the moratorium, what an immediate water and sewer moratorium will do?
Moratorium for water and sewer will stop anybody from adding to the system unless they're, and, and what we've always put behind it was if we have a failed system that's within the district, within the water and sewer district.
It will not take away what's already been granted.
Correct.
So to be clear, if sewer permits have been granted for any, any project whatsoever, it's not gonna take that away, but what it will do is it will pause any new applications, any new permits.
Well, Bryce Lemon is permitted per dwelling as we speak, so when it comes to the time that I can't permit them anymore, I just can't issue permits.
Can you point that out, Gary? When we're looking at Bryce Lemon, how many sewer permits are out on that piece of property right now?
How many, well, I wanna say six?
Six? I know four for, for sure, but it might be up to six probably by now.
Yeah, and that's, that's down close to the, to the, on the Charnick side, that's where they're starting, on Sedona. Woodside and Sedona, there's, I think, two or three on Woodside, and then there's four in, on Sedona?
I think it is four.
Yeah, I've been going down there through the inspection.
How much more is that subdivision gonna add to this 440 or 540?
Well, I think that the total is 117--
111.
111 four-bedroom houses, so 111 times 440. 440, it's 110 gallons per day per bedroom. I can do it on my calculator.
Mr. Krankeoli. Name, name an address, please.
Lou Krankeoli, 18 Blueberry Lane. I came here just to listen, but I, I just, I have to, I, I just can't, can't believe what I'm just hearing right now. But let me ask a question. I was told, I, as you know, I go to Florida a lot, so I don't know what's going on half the time in, in this town. But I've, I've been told that we have a new water source somewhere down at bottom of Charnick Hill. Are we ever, are we gonna develop that to take care of Mushka Park? I understand there's a water source there. Someone told me the other day, some reputable people here in town told me that there is a water source somewhere down Barracks Hill or wherever, down by that area, down where Bryce Lemon is. Are we gonna do anything with that water source?
Honestly, Louie, I'm not aware.
I've never, I've never heard of it.
We have a new water source.
Never heard of it.
Never heard of it?
No.
I'll have to look into it because I was told by pretty reputable people that there is.
I, I can't imagine this is the same thing, but we have had discussions in the past about whether or not we can tap into the Quabin line that runs through town, but that can't be--
Anyway, I'll, I'll further look into that. Now let's get to the sewer issue.
Well, if I, if I could, I'd like to answer Mr. Walker's question on upon full build, 48,400 gallons per day. At 111 houses at 440. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's all right. I've interrupted before, but I interrupted you, but only when the chair said I could.
Many times.
In the nine years that I was a selectman, for the better part of that nine years, we were involved in all kinds of INI work, and I thought we had it pretty well under control at the time I left in '06. And so the pipes that we were dealing with back then are now all leaking again. Is that what I'm hearing?
So when I, I don't think Skip's still on the phone.
You came in after I left. I left in '06.
I know.
We had done extensive work. In fact, they were working right in front of my house just as I was getting out, I think.
When I came on in '07 and Doug was still on the board, we did a massive project to dead exclude, where were we, Gary? 1.5 million?
Yeah.
Got it at the fall town meeting, they started INI in '08, five years, very aggressive program of INI.
But that was, still was not the whole, the whole town.
Yeah. So I don't know if you had the same issue where you had an aggressive, say, five years, and then a gap where we then stepped up again.
I'd have to talk to Doug, but it seemed like the majority of the time that I served on the board, we were working on INI, and I thought we had it pretty well under control. I remember Kyle Christensen coming to us about, about the amount of water we were losing on a daily basis, and we tried to educate the people of the town, if you're emptying a dehumidifier, empty it outside, don't put it down the toilet or in your shower so we don't, and said, any extensive water going. I still use it to go out and water my, my flowers. But I just can't believe that, after all the work we did during, during the time I was there, that we have this major problem. But if we do, we do.
It is constant.
And the last thing I'd like to say is, this is, this is the thing that really bothers me the most, what I just heard. There was a 10-year discussion back and forth between the town, the state, and a particular resident. It started when I was a selectman, I remember the discussion. And finally, the discussion came to an end because there was an agreement to put a project down called Bryce Lemon. And if I'm hearing correctly, if I'm hearing correctly, maybe I'm old now, maybe I'm not hearing right, that we're talking about, we could put a moratorium, and if there is, we're gonna stop that project from going forward, because it doesn't cover what the town administrator said. If I heard the DPW superintendent correctly, the permits get set house by house. If that's true, after 10 years, I think that's despicable. I think that's deplorable.
My understanding--
And I'm ashamed, I, I'd be ashamed to be a resident of this town, if, why didn't we address that 10 years ago? Now, I hope I'm all wrong here, I hope I'm off-base, I hope I didn't hear correctly. I really do. I really hope I didn't hear correctly.
You have to go with, I mean, he's the subject matter expert.
Mr. Krankeoli, I think you heard the beginning conversation of this. I mean, the first thing that's going to concern us is the fact that we know we have sewer line that's already headed down. We know we have sewer line that nobody wanted that's already heading up Charnak Hill. So when we start talking about a moratorium and what ends up being included, that has to be part of the conversation.
Also--
Why didn't you stop at 10 years? Why didn't you say, "We don't have the capacity, we can't do this project"?
We had a moratorium.
It got, it got approved, it got approved. State approved it, you folks approved it, everybody approved it after 10 years, longest in the history of this town. And now, to me, it sounds like a backdoor job, but hey, who, what do I know? I'm out of, I'm out of sync.
Anything else, Gary?
My understanding is that, just what I said, my understanding is just what I said, if it hasn't been permitted yet, if there is a project that has not been permitted yet, that would be the project that's impacted by a moratorium. Anything already permitted would not be. That's my understanding, after having spoken with legal.
And you're correct, and I'm sorry if, if I gave the wrong impression, especially to Mr. Krankeoli, but Bryce Lemon was the first subdivision in town since the state gave the jurisdiction of sewer extension permits to the locals as opposed to DEP. So the whole development is permitted for sewer.
Oh, it is.
And, and I don't, you know, I'm, we're all saying it, not all saying, but Mr. Krankeoli is saying that we have millions of gallons of INI. We don't know that until we get in there and do the--
Regardless of the INI, again, regardless, unless you reduce it substantially--
Right.
Hundreds of thousands of gallons, you're still gonna be up against it. This is the point, you're still up against your, your limit.
Yeah.
And that's where we have a problem.
Chairperson, I don't remember my using the word millions. I, I don't, I don't know what the superintendent's talking about. All I said was during my time, we did a lot of INI work. And I was just, I'm just concerned that it's still, it's still bad. I don't know what happened to all the work we did. If, if that part that we did years ago, if that's failing, and it's failing only after about seven or eight years, I got off in '06, all 12 years, I'm, I'm concerned that it's failing that quickly, but maybe that's what happens.
I appreciate that. I mean, I think you know well, it's a constant process.
Oh, I realize that.
It's a constant maintenance process.
I realize that.
And when we have gaps in that maintenance, areas that might have been fine 10 years ago are no longer fine, we have breaches in different areas. I do think, to your point, it would be great to see a history of when we really started doing our INI work and, and where we've headed since then. So that would include the projects that were under your jurisdiction when you were on the board, the stuff we did five years ago that started in '08 with the money we, we got then, and the stuff that we're about to start now. Maybe we can put that together.
Yeah, and my, my proposal to further with the board is they will have to publication, public, publish, I'm sorry, publish a town hearing notice for two weeks, and they'll have to have that public hearing on Wednesday, June 6th at a place and time to be decided.
Could be here, if the board is available.
What's already permitted besides Bryce Lemon?
I can't hear you.
What's already permitted besides Bryce Lemon?
Nothing. That is, that's, like I said, the first sewer use extension permitting process. The only thing that gets permitted now is lots that are available that have sewer and water that go by it or near it. That's all. Now, part of, don't forget, part of Bryce Lemon included Pleasantale, Kenwood, and those folks on Main Street who have failed systems.
How about individual homes that are being built now, that have been granted permits? So they're not actually using, using the, the town sewer yet, but they have been permitted, right? So there are a number of those as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
A few.
But they've been permitted?
Yes.
So they're, okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at from this point forward, or whenever it's decided by, by the commissioners and the board of selectmen. This is just my recommendation and my information to you.
Mr. Williams.
Is the heights still included in there, or is that--
The heights, and I talked to Margaret about this, tapped into some of the selectmen, and I don't, I just wanted to be sure that a year ago or whenever we did it, that the heights has a guaranteed amount of 30,000 gallons.
The board of selectmen voted it, and I believe it was 45,000.
And I, and I wanted to make sure that that remains the same, 30,000 gallons, because the lines are up there.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have any development, nobody's gonna jump into that piece of property if you don't give me utilities.
The, the problem with that, though, is that that reserve is not included in the actual, so that increases, that increases the amount even, even greater.
So as the board of selectmen and as sewer water commissioners, we can begin this process if we so wish. So at the recommendation of the DPW superintendent, we can schedule the first step, which is a public hearing. And that would be with a motion.
Well, we have--
Yeah, excuse me, I had one more--
Sorry, I missed it.
I want, one more thing that I, I was gonna bring up at the public, but you do know that right now, from Bryce Lemon, it, the line goes through a private road, a private way, the line that he put in and down. Was that permitted?
That's part of, to, if I may, that's part of the sewer use extension, that's the completed project that goes down Fairview to Phillips and Ultima.
So there's no chance that the individual homeowners on that road can turn around to the town after the town tries to take it over and say, "Hey, no, you owe us $10,000 a month" for, for, on their road, it's their road.
Their road, but that would go through the easement process, like in so many other places in town for as far as--
So has permits been done? If they haven't, to me, I mean, you better be make sure that nothing can come back and, and haunt you on that one. That's, that's my, my grief on that.
Are you asking about the granting of the easement? Or the granting of the easement?
The, the granting of the easement for him to put it in there, to dig it in and put it in, and was there, you know, was everything done proper?
Okay, so it's a private way, and so that granting of the easement would have to have been done by the person installing the sewer and the abutters, the, the people whose properties it's crossing, so that, I, I, I don't know if anybody, I haven't heard anything about how that--
The question hasn't been asked before, Dick, so I can't answer that honestly, so I will, I'll look at it, I, I just don't--
I don't have that something for the, you know, I, I just don't want the town to be
be nailed later, you know? Something goes wrong with it.
Okay. So why don't we, as commissioners, send a letter to the owner of the line, asking for, asking for backup information in the letters that went out. They had to have had formal approval.
Yes.
But it didn't come through.
It would also be reflected in the property deeds. So that's another place we could look.
Thank you.
So Shealy, you looking for a motion on the DPW superintendent's recommendation?
That would be our process. He's asking for the first step in a process.
First step would be to advertise and line up the public hearing.
And, yes, and advertising would be on the board's vote. And you're suggesting Wednesday, June 6?
Wednesday, June 6.
6:00 PM.
Gary, why not a regular meeting night?
Because legal is not available.
Yeah, we wanted legal to be a part of that. So we tried for the two Mondays. Actually, had tried to have a special, well, we got one on the 4th, and then we tried for the Monday following, and he couldn't make it.
So we'd have to post it tomorrow, Wednesday morning. Yeah, two weeks posting.
For June 6. It's not required to be two weeks, but we want to give it two weeks.
Right, yeah.
So I will make that motion that we, per the request of the superintendent of the Department of Public Works, initiate the process for an immediate water and sewer moratoriums or public hearing to take place on Wednesday, June 6.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM?
7:00. 7:00. Can I have a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? So again, this is the first step of a process. We are setting a public hearing.
Just ask them for a hearing.
For discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Just as a point of procedure, the, once the public hearing takes place, the board's vote and the outcome of that hearing is going to have to be posted three weeks simultaneously after the hearing, so everyone knows the results of that hearing. So it's a matter, part of the process.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you for your efforts.
Gary, tell your troops to keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. I will. Thank you for the comment.
No questions for Mr. Keller? Are we all set? All right?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Sounds like you're up, Mark.
Okay. All right. So the only thing I have in updates, we can get into town meeting recap and budget, but updates. Quite a while ago, I brought to the board a recommendation to establish goals and objectives for the coming year. And in your, in your packets tonight, I have that same template that I showed the board, had to have been at least a year ago, and with just some ideas about what to put on the, what to put on a list of goals and objectives. So in order, there are so many things happening in town. A lot of it is, a lot of it involves growth, infrastructure, and it would be, I think it would be helpful to me and possibly to the board to keep you on track in different governmental areas to establish goals for yourself. What would you like to see in the next year? And what would you like to see happen policy-wise over the long term? So I don't have mine, I don't have mine with me, unfortunately. Why is it...
It's like that.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. All right. I must have pulled it out with this. So I don't know if the board has any thoughts. I know this is kind of a new, this might be a bit of a new concept, but it would help, I think it might help guide future meetings and, and keep on this track, keep, keep the board moving forward in certain areas. So I've put a few things in. So I have basic, I have categories that I've outlined. We could do it however the board likes. But one of the big categories would be fiscal management. And as a, as an example of a, an objective for the coming year, take some time to review and update the town's financial policies, you know, get to know the policies and update them as needed, especially based on the auditor's recommendations. The next would be capital buildings and infrastructure. We know we have challenges with maintaining our buildings and infrastructure. So this is another thing that I had brought to the board, I don't know, a year, at least a year ago, I guess, to possibly establish a town buildings review committee to assess the condition of buildings and make recommendations on upgrades and repairs for our town buildings. Another, one would be establish a senior center planning task force to begin exploring options for a new senior center. Establish water and sewer district boundaries, formally, formally establish those district boundaries, and explore the possibility of forming a water and sewer, water commission and sewer commission. The next category, economic and community development, still an ongoing challenge the town has. I've, I've included the growth management study Phase II in here and start reviewing that, participate in it, and see if there are any zoning bylaws and local regulations and things we can change based on recommendations made in this study. Begin our streamlined permitting implementation process right at the start of the fiscal year. The streamlined permitting software's been funded, and we were fortunate enough to find out last week, we got a grant to cover all the, all the one-time startup costs in addition to a grant to fund the implementation consultants. So that's something that we should be getting moving on. Another is moving forward with the recreational marijuana establishment bylaws. Now, we know the bylaw subcommittee is doing a lot of work on that. I think the board, periodic updates to the board might be really helpful as we head toward the fall. The next category is citizen engagement and communication. One of the big things that we've discussed over and over and over again, and I'm sorry that Mr. Karnackioli left because he was in my office talking about this the other day, the permanent LED community signboard in, right in the town center. Put that up there. Have it available for emergency notification, town civic events, town meetings, and things like that, and make it permanent, nice-looking signboard. That's something that we, we can get started, get started with this coming fiscal year. Next, municipal operations. We already, the last time I showed this to the board, we had a, we had a subcategory called develop succession plans for management positions. Now we find ourselves having to develop one for the DPW superintendent position. Review and approve the updated personnel policy manual. This is, this is something that's been kind of on the back burner over the last two years. I'd like to start bringing chapters to the board to review and approve and move forward with. And then review board and committee appointments and charges. So actually, look at all of your appointed committees. Take a look to see if there are established charges for the committees. See if updates need to happen. And finally, regionalization and shared services. This is very vague at this point, but continue to pursue shared equipment and service, and services. Regional dispatch is one. That's a very good example now. So same thing with regional ACO, regional highway equipment contracts. So if the board has any suggestions about how to outline this, I'd request that the board give this some serious consideration. Add subcategories at your next meeting, and let's, you know, let's lay out a plan for the coming year.
Okay. So can we ask all board members to put some thought over the next week into your goals and objectives? And they might be personal ones. They might be those for the town. I think, Margaret, the only thing maybe we can consider changing is to put some harder dates on the less long-term ones, that we really have a year-long schedule that we can kind of follow. Obviously, with the, for example, you know, marijuana, which you wrote all of these as examples, but they seem like all real ones to me. You know, marijuana is very time-sensitive. We really only have the summer to get our bylaws and requests and information straightened out to be ready. Let, let's set that up for the June 4th agenda. And the one other thing, and I honestly don't know how to frame this, I know other communities have done it, is for the board to be able to workshop together to figure out how we're going to best be able to accomplish all of this. It's often a...
You have, you have a work session or a retreat. A lot of boards do that. So, yeah, we can look into doing that.
That would be great.
Mr. Williams?
And in, one second. And in addition to that, I think, let's, let's send that out to all of our department heads, our committees and commissions. See if you guys have any big-ticket items we should be all talking about. I think the other thing we maybe should consider doing again is liaison. And we can talk about that. The boards used to do liaisons among the different committees and commissions. With Margaret here, we obviously don't have the actual need for it. On the other hand, we often have meetings that occur that nobody's in attendance. Maybe we should be. We should probably talk about that. And as far as your goals and objectives, and I would say this for everybody, if you feel like within your goals and objectives, you need to have a meeting, get more information, can you include that? Whether that means taking you down to CMRPC or whatever you need to do, and we'll get everybody up to speed.
Okay. All right. So this will come back on June 4th.
Oh, sorry. And I forgot, Dick.
How could you forget?
I don't know. I didn't look.
Because I drove through it the other day. I think it'd be a good idea with the select board. I'd probably talk to the select board in Holden of maybe a byway. How are you going to get this traffic from Rutland to, or to anyplace? They're taking all kinds of, you know, backroads right now. And I feel that 20 years ago, the planning board went to talk to the planning board in Holden. They thought it was a great idea. The northern route sounded like a great idea, and it disappeared. Well, you guys have probably been in the, in the traffic jams in Holden. It's only going to get worse as we build up Rutland. So I think that's something that you ought to put in your objectives.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Was there anything else from Margaret? Do you want to keep going?
If you'd like to just jump right over to the town meeting recap, we can do that. Or would you prefer to just go in order? We can go in order. We can come back.
We'll go in order. We'll save that for last.
Okay, all right.
Could I have a motion, I have a motion to accept the resignation of Jake Pettis from the Conservation Commission?
Can we discuss why?
Well, we could. The letter, however, does not give a reason. "I, Jake Pettis, of 240 Palmagussett Road, am respectively delivering my resignation and withdraw from the Rutland Board of Conservation. Notice of withdrawal is effective immediately on delivery of this letter."
Happy to accept it. Do, do we normally reach out some sort of closure on when somebody drops a resignation last?
We've done, since I've been here, we've done exit interviews for employees, but not for board and committee members. I'm happy to, I'm happy to contact.
Is there an issue we should know about?
Well, this is our second conservation resignation in two weeks. So it would maybe be, we don't know if there's any underlying reason or if it's just something they were done with.
Something Margaret can handle on her end?
Definitely.
So I'll make a motion that we, with regret, accept the resignation for the request of Jake Pettis from the Conservation, from the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Effective May 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Seth?
Yes?
MEMA Public Safety statewide mutual aid agreement, all circled and underlined and highlighted. Would you like to come up? Or, Margaret, does he need to come up?
If you'd like to, if you'd like to speak to it. We don't have the actual agreement. What the board has is the sign-on, the sign-in sheet?
Yep.
Sign-on sheet and the statute under which the agreement, yeah.
Okay. What you've got before you is a local option, acceptance of master general law. There was some confusion of whether it had to be a town meeting approval or just the board approval, and apparently this is just the board approval. Both police, fire, and DPW are, fall under different mutual aid agreements throughout the Commonwealth. This gives a broader range of mutual aid capabilities to other boards and committees. Perfect example, after Hurricane Sandy went through, there was a lot of need for building inspectors to help devastation areas, things of that nature, border health, things of that nature for inspections, inspectional services. So this basically gives us a blanket coverage of any boards and committee would be eligible. We would be eligible to offer, or we would also be eligible to receive assistance from other communities. So it's just basically, the letter is signed by the board, the letter's sent to MEMA's office, and then we're just put on the list that we've accepted this local option. So.
And this helps us with grants? Did I say something?
It could potentially help us with grants.
There's no downside to it.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Nope.
Can you recommend it?
I recommend. I brought it forward, yes.
This, this, from what I know, we, it's not going to change practice. I mean, there's already mutual aid in practice, but what, this delves deeper into the sending agency and the receiving agency, and who's responsible for what costs and things like that. So everyone's on a level playing field.
So you, you need somebody to accept a certain statute, NGL statute?
Yeah, it should be actually in the, the sign form.
No.
The opt-in form?
So actually, you can just make a motion to sign the mutual aid opt-in form.
Which I have the original here.
I'll make a motion that the board sign the mutual aid opt-in form, attachment C, for the request of the fire chief.
And that is chapter 40, section 4J.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Seth, tell your troops to keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Um, oh, I guess authorize the chair to sign.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the ratification of our new FinCom members. So at town meeting, the moderator, Mr. Jordan, announced two new members as well as two returning members. And if we could get a motion to ratify those members, we do not approve them or accept them.
I'll make a motion that the board ratify the FinCom appointments made at annual town meeting.
And could you list them, do you mind?
So Carl J. Martins for one term expiring 2019, Brian E. Stinson for a three-year term expiring 2021.
And that was...
Tom Rochala.
Oh, and...
So these are returners.
Oh, okay. And the returning terms of Tom Rochala and Karen...
Norwal.
Norwal. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. All right. The ambulance and cruiser purchase agreements. So you guys are having a good night.
It's going to be a good year, see. So on Monday, May 14th, Rutland voters overwhelmingly approved the dead exclusion for the new ambulance and cruiser. And in accordance with, I've included this recommendation in the board's packets, in accordance with the authority vested in the board of selectmen to execute contracts on behalf of the town, I recommend that the board by vote designate the town administrator, chief procurement officer, along with the fire chief and police chief to execute the respective purchase agreements. I also recommend that the board vote to make the declaration on the surplus town property, the old ambulance, and the motion would be to declare that the '08 ambulance be declared surplus for trade-in toward the purchase of the new ambulance in FY19.
That's a great memo. Thank you. It's good news.
Do it separately or all as one?
You can do it all as one. That's fine.
I'll move that to board. Designate the town administrator, chief procurement officer, along with the fire chief and police chief to execute their respective purchase agreements. And also declare the 2008 ambulance surplus for trade-in towards the purchase of a new ambulance in fiscal year 19.
Second?
Second. Thank you. Is there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And thank you to the voters, everyone who came out to the polls and agreed to a dead exclusion, a temporary tax increase, because we really needed both of those pieces of equipment. Glad to see you're getting them. All right. Margaret, we've made it to town meeting recap.
Town meeting recap. It really is only going to be a budget recap tonight, I'm afraid. Actually, no, I'm not afraid. I'm glad. It's only, not a night many of us want to relive. All right. So budget, Article 8. Article 8 was voted for the contingent reductions. In the end, after it was revisited, the reduced budget total is $21,540,405.47, which is a $1,281.77 increase over the FY18 budget. I've put in the board's packets the outline of the reductions. They have been reorganized so that non-union employees get the wage corrections that they've, that were requested. And there are several other lines, though, that still are showing reductions. And so on this chart, I've put a column FY19 to restore to recommended. It's an outline of all of the recommended budget items that couldn't be restored or made whole at the annual town meeting. And I would ask that the board consider bringing these forward to a future town meeting in FY19 to make the restorations. The cuts total $84,293.12. And they pretty much are across most municipal departments. So this doesn't require any action by the board tonight, but I would ask to bring it back to a, to a future town meeting to make those, those lines whole. The other thing that's tied to this is I've drafted a letter to the Wachusett Regional School District from the Board of School District from the board of selectmen explaining the town's fiscal situation at the town meeting and asking that any excess state aid above what they projected for FY19 be returned to the member towns, be returned to Rutland. I understand that other towns are going to be doing the same thing, and this would go a long way to helping with, restore some of those budget cuts.
Is that letter ready now?
It is ready as, as a final letter, yes. Do you want to read it or?
We read it.
Oh, okay.
And your attachment is, is the letter.
Could I have a motion to sign and send the letter as prepared by the town administrator?
I'll make a motion that the board sign and send the letter to the superintendent of, and of Wachusett Regional School District as well as the school district committee members requesting the funding. Any additional funding be returned to member towns as prepared.
Still in second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, DPW superintendent succession plan.
So, what the board has in your packet tonight is the job description. I would ask that the board review the job description. This was last updated as a draft job description back in, the date on your sheet says 5/21/18, that's today. It was actually January 26, 2017. So, we had done a, a whole round of job description updates. I have shaded the areas that refer to water and sewer, because as we move forward with discussions on potential water and sewer commission, those areas would be changed. So, I would ask the board to start looking at those.
Have you read, have you reviewed this?
He, he created it, actually.
Yeah, we were just a while back.
It was. Do you remember what it says?
No, it said, it said move on.
No. In an ideal world, should funding be sufficient? I think it would be a great idea. This is just an initial, an initial comment in the whole succession plan. Ideally, there would be some transition period to give a new DPW superintendent at least some insight on the town, on the infrastructure, show the new superintendent where, where issues are, what projects lie ahead. And there's just so much to go through. I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be very fair for a new DPW superintendent to come in cold turkey like that with no, with no background. So, I think a transition plan, a funding allows would be ideal.
So, it sounds like we already have a fall town meeting folder with a couple of things in it. Maybe start that right now?
Mm-hmm.
Make it red.
Mm-hmm.
Can we put this on the next meeting agenda? And could we all have a discussion about how we see this position, whether or not it evolves, changes any, in any way significantly from what it is now in terms of structure, considering what you brought up tonight? Okay. Thanks. He's nodding.
I got the board, please? I know, I know Dick wants my job, so.
Wyatt, you had your chance for comment. To the board, to Margaret, to everybody. I have certainly given my, given my date several meetings ago. It's almost gone on two months. I think that this is something that had to be acted on, certainly not for my, for my sake, but for the towns and where you go from here. I have offered any kind of assistance I can give, but it's only what the town wants. I'm not trying to be crazy. I enjoy what I do. I love the town. I will, I will miss it. But I will do what I can to help my successor and help him or her get through the process of the DPW superintendentship, if you will. Water and sewer commission or commissioners or whatever you try to do with that, in my opinion, is going to toss, cost the town a lot of money. But if that's the way the town chooses to go, so be it. We'll have to work on that. I'd also like to say that not, not in any under-the-table effort or movement, and what I really am concerned about, not that not only happens in Rutland, but everywhere, is you will get an orthodox DPW superintendent. And I fully admit that I'm not. I fully admit that anybody in the position of any town has to do what he or she has to do to get a lot of things done without advising people. I think the chiefs can back me up with this. We just, we just get it done. I fear that if you get somebody in there just out of school or that's really going to follow everything that has to be done, such as a sewer and water commissioner, it's going to cost a lot of money. But, that's, that's just me being me in my 60s, I think, almost. So, I've really enjoyed my time here. I love the town of Rutland, and I've said it last time, 01543 is my zip code. If you don't believe me, you can ask my wife. So, but not in public. But it is time, it is time to move on. But I just wanted to extend that to the board, to the town administrator, everybody, that I am and will do whatever I can to support the town in whichever direction it goes. Thank you.
Water sewer is on our agenda again. Did we cover that?
Yeah, we covered it, yes.
Oh, good. Does anyone have any business before the board?
I, if I could just add one little thing that I did not have on my, I just want to, I just want to extend the meeting a little longer. It's so nice.
It's still light outside.
It's still light outside. All right, I'll make this quick. And, and Dick, please don't go into shock when I mention that Rutland is one of 67 communities that have, has been designated a housing choice community. And I'll tell you, there is no obligation on, on our part to actually adhere to, you know, the two-thirds voting requirement or the, I'm sorry, the majority voting requirement, things like that. The one thing I would like to see out of this is, is money, and I actually highlighted this area. We are going to be eligible for increased funding through MassWorks for infrastructure improvements, which could include bridges, culverts, things like that. The, the intent is to help it enhance housing production, but one of the bigger things here, and CMRPC is well aware of our situation where we have an overflow kind of, of housing development, but to manage our housing development. They will provide technical assistance funding for zoning bylaw updates that work for us, for regulations that work for us. So, this is something that I'd like to see out of it. We were part of a regional application for housing choice designation along with Holden and some other, some other towns in, in the region. And so, we are one of 67 communities statewide that's been designated a housing choice community. We will not take, the carrot and the stick issue is a real issue, and we are not going to, you know, we have to be aware so we're not susceptible to the state putting their foot down and imposing their, their rules on us. What we do want to do is be eligible for increased funding through this program, for things that we want, so.
I'll keep my mouth shut at the moment.
Okay. I know that you, I know that you're passionate about this, so.
I'm seeing agriculture being pushed right out the door, and I tell you, that's one of the things I asked the board of assessor Diane. Right now, residential and agriculture are the same. I like to see agriculture pulled out and made separate so that if anything happens, that they can't come in and say, oh, here's a farmland, you know? Even though it's under 61A or whatever, we're going to make housing out of it.
We've had...
Wouldn't the tax was individual loss? I don't know. I don't know, I just...
You want to, and...
I'm just, I'm getting frustrated.
This is something, well, this is something that we can ask them to look into. We don't want to, you know, the, the community does not want to sacrifice its identity, its agricultural identity because of housing choice, you know, because of a housing choice initiative. Maybe there's a way that we can do that. Right now, we have very little in the way of controls. I mean, we've seen this, this 61A issue, just kind of blowing up recently, and we have no controls with that. Maybe there's some way that we can start managing that, managing our agricultural lands and managing our housing production so that it all works for the community. So, these are things we need to look into.
Stephanie, thank you.
I do have one last thing. Sorry, I'm going to take it from big to a more specific item. And I think everybody in the room was at town meeting, which got contentious, unfortunately. But I just wanted to note something because I've had several people question me on it, and it is a fair question. And that question is, why did I make the motion to change our budget to allow Margaret to take a significant salary reduction? And I just want to explain that for the person who made our budget, who worked for our budget, who worked with the department heads and the support staff, who in this particular situation were being most affected, to have not done as she asked me to do, make the motion to make that change, felt disrespectful. I'm not glad that we had to do it. I'm glad that, I guess, we did do it, and I hope that our board, certainly as soon as we can at fall town meeting, and we have no idea yet where free cash is going to fall, but to her point about making everything whole, that would include her salary as well. And we again offer you our thanks, and that's not really the word that's, it's not the right word.
Employees who have fallen behind deserve to be compensated fairly. So, that was the right thing to do.
Everyone deserves to be compensated, compensated fairly.
The sign of a true leader.
So, we, yeah, we really sincerely thank you.
Happy to have you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
No. I won't take a motion to adjourn.
May I?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to comment on, on...
I feel like you're out of words.